Is our special meeting slash workshop for Village of Villa Park. If the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Aiello. Trustee Bultus. Trustee Taglia.
Here.
Trustee Case. Trustee Bullwinkle.
Here.
President Colleton.
Here. If we could all please stand. Joey, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Taglia, could you please lead us in a prayer? Could you all be standing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Our Heavenly Father, would I be pleased to grant that this meeting thus begun in order, be conducted in peace, and closed in harmony. Amen.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Making a motion.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Second.
Questions or comments on the agenda? Roll call, please.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
The agenda's approved. Item four, public comments on agenda items. If you would like to speak on item five, six, seven, eight, or nine, now would be your time. If you have something to speak on that is not on one of those items, item 10 on your agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. You can come right up to the dais, please state your name for the record, which item you'd like to speak on, and if you're not sure what our agenda is, we have copies up on the door. With that, we will go to item five, presentation of the 2012 Adopt a Fire Hydrant Program winners. Chief, you want to do that?
No.
(laughing).
Trustee. Want me to sign it?
Yes. Who are you?
Okay. Thanks for being here. Tonight, as Adopt a Hydrant winners, and we have our three members in the audience. Before we get to that, I'd like to bring up Joey Egan. Joey Egan came up with the idea of Adopt a Hydrant.
I've got to tell you, I've been here seven months as the fire chief, and I think it's an awesome program. I just think it's the neatest thing. But before I get started, I just wanted to go through a couple of things. I want to thank all the participants that were involved with Adopt a Hydrant. To date, we have 277. In 2011, we had 160, and in 2012, we had 117. So that's about 30 percent of the hydrants in Villa Park. We have about just over 1,000 hydrants in the village. So I think it's, so 30 percent, maybe we'll get 31 percent in the next two years will be awesome. The revenue that generated, we have, minus the expenses, about $4,000, and that money will be, will go towards a new outdoor electronic sign at Fire Station 3. The sign we have there now, it's probably poor at best. It's pretty dilapidated, and when I came here back in June, one of my first projects for Pet Peep was to get rid of that sign and try to get funds for a new sign. So we're looking to get about $12,000 to $15,000 to do the sign. We are taking donations at any time, so if you're watching tonight and you want to be a donation giver, go ahead and donate to the, to the electronics sign at Fire Station 3. We'd appreciate it. So on top of that, or with that, I'll get started with the awards. The first award goes to Daniel Erman. Come on up here. Daniel.[253.81][253.81](applause). Dan and his family painted the sign, or the sign, the hydrant, at Monroe and Summit, Burton Ernie.
That's great.
So we have a donation here for you for dinner with the firefighters, six people.[274.12][274.12](laughing).
(laughing).
Thank you very much.
Yay.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much.[280.12][280.12](applause).
Nice. Nice.
All right, second place was a hydrant at 433 South Illinois, Lucio and Ciancio, Nemo with the turtle.
Nice.
So, thank you.[301.12][301.12](applause). And for his, his hard work at the hydrant, we're going to give him a Dominix Pizza and Pasta gift card and a $25 Walmart gift card. So thank you very much.[325.19][325.19](applause). All right. Good, awesome job. Thank you very much. Take it with them. Yep.
All right. Getting used to giving presentations and everything else.
All right, now the, the 2012 winner. It was Thomas the Train, 16 East Monroe. We have a, eight free admissions to the Lufkin or Jefferson pool, pool passes for one day, and also a $25 gift card for Walmart, to Walmart. So the winner is Thomas the Train, goes to Gay Moran.[365.65][365.65](applause).
You did it! Yeah, you did it! Yeah, you did it! You did it!
Thanks a lot. On behalf of the Villa Park Fire Department and the Village of Villa Park, thanks for all your help and continued support. Appreciate it.[393.43][393.43](applause).
Paul, and any newspaper, can we get the winners and the fire, and the firefighters all together in one big shot? The Egan family?
I don't know about you.
But your beautiful wife, yes, for sure, and both of your wonderful children, but...
We're all three of them.
Both, yeah, might as well be both. Not the big one, though. That's your big guy. And folks, if you're looking to do one of these fire hydrants and to paint one of these beautiful fire hydrants that are around, the village website has, where all of the fire hydrants are located, has pictures of all of them?
All of them.
Has pictures of all of the fire hydrants that have been painted, and if you're looking to purchase one, once the weather, obviously, it's four degrees today, but obviously, once the weather turns, we'll be back doing the fire hydrant program again, and we'd love to have you come in and, and purchase one of the fire hydrants, and the village will set up and give you the paint to do it and everything else. So please, come on by Village Hall, probably around March, and we'll start the program right back up again. Love to see 100 percent of our fire hydrants all painted throughout the village. With that, we will go to item six, presentation by Beth Marchetti of the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Wish I had something as fun to talk about as Thomas the Train fire hydrants.
Very cool.
But my things are fun, too, so we'll, we'll talk. Thanks for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak today. Everybody, oop, here we go.
A little focus there. There's... Yeah.
Ta-da! Again, I'm Beth Marchetti, celebrating my 13th year with the DuPage CBB. Is that okay? Can they pull it?
Well, we just want, well, we want to make sure that the people at home can see it, and I'm trying to think, and I think we have the computer set up this way so that that camera can hit the computer, but if you need somebody to hit next. Anybody willing to come up and do, and hit next on the computer?
I am so good at multitasking, I can do it.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we want to make sure that that camera, so that it comes out on the TV screen throughout so the residents can see your presentation. We don't want it just to be focused only here. They lock you out, Chief?
No, no.
Break it in.
They knew it was you.
The secret knock.
He's got it all good.
He's got it, okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. We want to make sure everybody at home can see this. We want to make sure everybody at home can see this.
Absolutely. So once again, Beth Marchetti, I represent one of the 22,000 men and women in the hospitality industry in DuPage County, and I'm celebrating my 13th year with the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. And tonight, I just want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about our partnership and what we've successfully done for the Village of Villa Park over the course of our partnership. I think it was almost, almost two years that I was here, I think it was in March, two years ago, and then just talk about what we've got in store moving forward as well. So the DuPage CBB, just as a reminder, I think, just in case there's anybody new here, is a not-for-profit organization. It was formed by local community and civic leaders, government, DuPage County government officials in 1987, and we were certified by the State of Illinois in 1989 as the certified destination marketing organization for DuPage County. The Bureau serves as a cooperative representing all components of the industry. It's, research shows that by compiling all products together, you've got a bigger product to sell, to compete in the, in the industry. So we co-op with all components, including hotels, restaurants, meeting facilities, attractions, and retail, and we act as a one-stop shop for meeting and event planners and visitors coming to DuPage County. Our organization has served as the marketing and sales arm for the county's hospitality industry for more than 20 years, and our mission remains the same, to promote DuPage County and our partners as a site for both business and leisure travel, and to enhance county-wide economic development. In that time, since 1989, we booked hundreds of thousands of room nights, and we've generated billions of dollars of visitor revenue for our communities. We've developed a sophisticated and consistent brand, DuPage County as a safe, value-driven alternative to downtown Chicago, and we've implemented award-winning marketing campaigns to keep DuPage County and our partners top of mind. As the state-certified CBB for the area, we receive grant funding each year from the State of Illinois that we have to match dollar for dollar with local occupancy tax dollars. These dollars support us, and they help meet, meet our match, and they allow the Bureau to move forward on different marketing programs that we initiate for our communities, and that put Villa Park Restaurants and Hotels and the Illinois Credit Cap in different venues on the map. Want to talk a little bit about what our sales team does for particularly the ODM. We're responsible for generating and servicing the leads that we call business leads. There are 17,000 hotel rooms in DuPage County that we have to try to fill. It's a big job. We uncover sales opportunities, and we present those opportunities to the hotels and the meeting venues, such as the ODM. We communicate those leads. We make, our sales team is each responsible, each member of our sales team has to make 100 phone calls a week to try to unearth pieces of business, and we have a database of about 5,000 meeting planners. Interestingly enough, tomorrow, we're getting trained on a new database system called Simple View, which is actually created, if you've heard of it, for CBBS, and we're very excited because it's going to be able to give us the opportunity to, to present reports to our partners without our staff having to take up a lot of man-hours to collect and gather that data. Our sales team also makes sales calls to corporations in feeder cities such as Indianapolis, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, and others, and we take partners with us so we can better sell the whole destination. We take them on fam tours, familiarization tours, and we continue to foster relationships with these planners at over 25 trade shows that we go to per year. Visitors spent $2.1 billion. Our industry created $150 million in state and local taxes, and like I said, it was about 22,000 at the beginning of the year. We're down to a little bit, close to 21,000 jobs for the county. Our marketing team is responsible for all the publications that, or, this is just a sampling of a few that we've done. Their print is not dead. We still do a lot of publications, but we have over 100,000 downloads per year of all of our publications on our website. We're responsible for distribution. We are on, with our Visitor's Guide that contains information on Villa Park, and all the Indiana east and west toll roads, and all the hotels to the CTM brochure rack display, and State of Illinois welcome centers along the interstates. We are a leading edge on technology. We're trying to keep up with the Joneses on technology. It's a, it's a tough task, but we've gotten a lot of awards for our social media campaigns. We are implementing, like I said, Simple View starting tomorrow, and we're also implementing a new app. More to come on that. But right in the, in the right-hand corner is the brochure that we did for the Village of Villa Park, complete with QR codes, download capabilities, and everything in that brochure's hyperlink, so I actually brought extras, and I put them out on the front, last case there. As a result of all this, our team has generated 350 leads last year with $74 million in estimated economic impact, and actually booked $48 million of business for DuPage County hotels. We've fulfilled a quarter million visitor inquiries, and we realized over 9 million visits to our, hits to our website. Since our inception of our partnership, we have featured ODM and all of our Meeting Planners Guides, which goes to 33,000 meeting planners, meeting professionals. We've listed Villa Park events on our calendar event pages. There's a sampling of that on the left-hand side there. Our database, our website's database-driven, so you can search by Villa Park and get a list of things that are going on in Villa Park. On the right is our... You have to go to the microphone. Sorry.
That's why we offered to have somebody hit the little button.
That's okay. I need the exercise.[1045.16][1045.16](laughing). I'm sorry. So should I go back? On the left-hand side is our calendar events page. Our website's database-driven, so you can search by Villa Park and get a list of events that are going on. On the right side is our Top 10 eBlast that goes to a database of 5,000 visitors, as well as press, constituents, municipalities, and particularly hotel concierge. They love receiving that because when people go to the front desk of the hotels, they can say, "What is there to see and do in the area this weekend?" And that's a quick, at-a-glance resource for those people. This is one of the most popular eBlasts that we have. As the state-certified Bureau, we feed that information to the State of Illinois's website. So again, there's Villa Park information on enjoyillinois.com. We are the only, the only certified bureaus have passwords to feed that information into there, so the State of Illinois can decide whether or not they're going to pick up a promotion for three-day getaways, or some, something that they're going to do with their advertising companies. So that's how, they pull all that information from that site. So we have a staff that enters that. Okay, so even though I was called a young lady today, I'm not so young when it comes to the social media, but Pinterest is our, Pinterest and Instagram are new social media tools, and to date, Villa Park, we just, literally just started Pinterest. We have 130 followers on Pinterest where you can re-pen pictures. And Twitter, we have a monthly Tuesday tweet chat where we feature different communities, and in October, we featured Villa Park, and the Expo, the ODM Expo donated tickets for that, so we drum up a lot of conversations, and we've got a lot of followers on Twitter. We actually have about 3,500 followers on Twitter and about 7,000 Facebook fans, so something not to be dismissed, certainly. We, our person is, we have a dedicated person who does all of our social media, so lots of good information can be shared that, through that channel. So the benefits for the Village of Villa Park, and we talked about this last time, but now I wanted to show you, this is coming to fruition. We feature Villa Park in all of our publications, like I said, our Visitor's Guide, which last year went in every single welcome bag for Ryder Cup guests. That's a QR code that people can scan with their smartphone, and it links them right to your website in villapark.com. On the right is our Village of Villa Park promotion, just a little verb, blurb on, for meeting planners. So that's a great tool to show them that the ODM can be obviously a great facility for sports, but there's so much more, and then there's a big listing for ODM right there. Your hotels are complimentary. There's some different opportunities, but what I came for tonight was just to show you, it's been up and running for a while, but I don't know if I've ever had the opportunity to come back and, and show you the video and the different landing page on our website, so I wanted to show you that real quickly. Okay, so this is the homepage of our website, and as you can see, we've created a community tab where Villa Park is listed with the dropdowns of the communities that support us financially. There is another section of the rest of the communities in DuPage County, but those are the ones that we are partnering with at the moment.
Oh, yes.
Oh, no.
Yes.
So that is the landing page for the Village of Villa Park that we created, and I can go back, but there's a little intro copy that is search engine match, search engine optimized with keywords that are built in through the meta tags and the, and the title tags in the back. There is obviously your logo with the wonderful headshot there of President Colleton, a little intro again, copy lodging dining. We're trying to attract people.[1366.33][1366.33](laughing).
You're brilliant for putting me up there. That's why we brought these people up, because we knew they were smart.
And then a list of events, and then at the bottom, it is database-driven, so once again, if you can't find what you were looking for on that first page, you can search by category and find it. I'm going to walk a little bit back and forth here. So right here, if you can see the Villa Park brochure that I talked about, you can view it, or, or you can actually request it. So if people click on request, we'll, we'll fulfill that with the Villa Park brochure, and we've, and we've done so. We printed 2,500, and we're actually almost, I think we only have about 500 brochures left. So I really want to show you that real quickly, the brochure that you can link onto your site. Here we go. Okay, how's this? So anybody can put this link on their website, and I would encourage you, if you have the opportunity to do so, it's just a good vehicle for you all to use. This has page-turning capabilities. And as you can see, the events, there's all links through there that are in the lighter blue, so you can link to the different sites that are hosting for more information on those events. There's a map that locates where Villa Park is, and again, a QR code that people can scan to go directly to your site. Okay, so last but not least, the video I'm going to show you was filmed about a year ago, and it does need updating. There's one business that's mentioned that has changed names since, but I wanted to give you a little taste of what we can do. This was, again, you can, we can send you the link to this video so you can utilize that.
Yeah. Don't worry, it'll make everybody upset if you do. Can we count?
Can you hear it? I don't know.
Hello. Welcome to Villa to Villa Park. I'm President Tom Colleton, and on behalf of our residents, it is my pleasure to welcome you on this virtual tour through our vibrant and active community. Stay tuned for more, and then come see for yourself all that Villa Park has to offer. Thank you. Welcome to Villa Park. The Village of Villa Park is a friendly, friendly community with comfortable, affordable hotels and lots to see and do. Take the kids to Safari Land, home of Illinois' largest indoor roller coaster. Enjoy a concert at the Zumba along our scenic Ferry Path nature trail, or take in an event at the ODM, DuPage County's largest sports and expo center. Adults won't want to miss our new off-track betting facility in the Solerno Princesa Vista Lotte. A visit to Villa Park wouldn't be complete without experiencing Summer Fest, Oktoberfest, or our weekly French market.
Okay, so obviously, there's one name change that we have to get in there, but I think that's a, obviously, video is the vehicle to entice people to visualize themselves there, and it also maximizes, again, search engine optimization, so again, if anybody can put that link on their site, if the village could, or any other partnering businesses and departments, that we'd be glad to provide that. So I feel like we brought a lot to the table. We, we try every day to promote our areas. We've got a lot of different events that we, we've cited, meeting planners to the ODM. We're continuing to work on that. We have people from the ODM on our board, so we just actually lost a piece of business, a table tennis tournament because of the flooring issues, but you know, again, it's, it's a constant work to try to get those pieces of business here, and we feel like we have a lot to offer as an alternative to downtown Chicago. I'm asking for your ongoing support. We've got some great things in store, and I took way too much time, but thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight.
No, I think, I think, I think truthfully, the village is, is pleased, obviously. This is a value-added definite proposition, and it's something that a year ago, I think, when we met at, what, Mayor's and Managers, maybe a year and a half ago, we figured it would be a good idea, and Richard just started with us, and I said, you know, we've never been part of this, and then I talked to Phil Greco, and Phil was pleased, obviously, with the results, and Safari Land, I believe, is still a member as well, too, so both gave, speak very highly of the...
So both gave, speak very highly of the organization, and for us, it's an added tool for marketing. It just becomes an added tool for marketing, and it definitely is very cost-effective for us as well. So unless, maybe you'll get peppered now with questions, but I see it as a positive, and I see it as something that the village should continue on with its relationship, and just find ways to utilize you even more and partner up more with you as well. Any questions or comments?
Is there any questions?
President Colleton?
Trustee Bullwinkle?
You know, my other life as a meeting and convention planner, I can definitely appreciate all that the CVB has to offer. Personally, you know, in my other world, I rely heavily on the CVBs that I work with. You all do a lot of legwork, and you save me as a planner a lot of time. So I appreciate that as a resource. And of course, you know, all the marketing and everything that you do for the respective communities, in this case, Villa Park, really appreciate all the help we can get to help get the word out, so.
Thank you so much. Interestingly enough, we literally just signed a partnership with CBET.
Oh, yeah.
So more to come on that.
Very good.
But we wanted to play in the big leagues. CBET is a resource that meeting professionals utilize, and it's hard to find us. You have to kind of drill down through the Chicagos of the world, but we're getting creative with how we get in front of those professionals. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Dubage County is such a big county, there's so much going on.
Right.
And we're right smack dab in the middle of a lot of different things, so we're positioned very well.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, anybody? Again, thanks for the opportunity.
Think you're good? Think you're good?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Item seven, discussion regarding tobacco shops. Manager Keener.
Thank you, Your Honor. Due to the increased emergence of tobacco shops located within the Village of Villa Park, there has been a request to consider regulations concerning signage, location, and quantity of these establishments within the village. And, Your Honor, I've been in contact with our excellent village attorney, Kathy, and I believe we'll probably turn it over to her for some enlightenment. Are they here today? Absolutely.
Wow. Did I get one? It was a return.
That was a return shot, sorry.
I earned it tonight, so I'll be good. Regulation of any business is very, very difficult. It's my understanding that the village has taken a position, ongoing position, of using our manufactured, manufacturing districts for such things as...
Pawn shops.
Pawn shops and, oh, purchase of gold, et cetera. And so the suggestion is that we also limit any potentially new tobacco shops to the same M district. And so consequently, if there is a consensus interruption, I will proceed to draft an ordinance. It is my understanding that such an ordinance would be a part of the zoning code and require a public hearing, but I will check into that tomorrow and get something in draft two you for you to consider. Enforcement of these types of ordinances may be difficult, but if the village board is committed, we'll go forward.
Can you, if you're going to look that up and get us that information, can you also look up what our, what the village's opportunity is as far as items sold, paraphernalia?
Research that this morning. And unfortunately, and I know everyone sitting on this dais understands that being a non-home rule municipality is a tremendous detriment in terms of enforcement and regulations. Having said that, however, the problem with drug paraphernalia isn't, in itself, is not an illegal item. According to state law and all of the ordinances that I have, I read this morning, and I really did concentrate to be able to answer your question, you have to demonstrate that the drug paraphernalia was actually purchased, used, or sold in connection with an unlawful activity or intent to commit an unlawful activity. And so it is going to be very difficult. But having said that, I'm not going to give up. So I will continue to look at it and see to what extent we can limit, regulate drug paraphernalia. I understand the concern, I agree with it.
Well, I would imagine everybody will probably at least want to see the information.
I have a copy.
Where we can go and what we can do, and not only the paraphernalia, but also of this, because I can't imagine it was brought up if people were concerned. But I'll let the boards speak for themselves if they want to go forward or not.
President Colleton?
Trustee Bullwinkle?
I definitely want to move forward with this, and in fact, I want to thank the manager and also trustee Taglia for coming on board. And I approached the manager about this because I've been inundated with complaints from members of the community about this, and so I felt now might be a good time to talk about it and figure it out. The fact that we're a non-home rule community has been kind of used as an excuse for a long time in this, in this village, and I don't really believe that there aren't solutions just because we are a non-home rule community. So that's why I wanted to bring it forward, to kind of talk about it, you know, and try to figure out what's the happy medium here. Maybe it is the M1 district, maybe it's not, but...
I think under our general police powers and our right to maintain standards of peace and copacetic living, that we would go forward with this, because these kinds, types of establishments typically don't enhance comfortable, quiet, good living. But we now have a legislator that is absolutely a dynamo. And as we come up with our list, we have our very own representative in the General Assembly to take care of all of these ills, and we shall demand that he takes these issues and carries them through for us. In the meantime, we'll give him our best shot.
And just for the...
Does she have his address?
Just for the record, this, you know, this doesn't affect the tobacco shops and the hookah lounges, et cetera, et cetera, that are already in existence.
Correct.
This would be anything new.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. President?
Trustee Taglia?
I'd like to thank the board for considering this. I do see the tobacco shops popping up all over the place, and I've been kind of looking into it in the village to see why that is. It seems that a lot of the businessmen in town tell me that the regulation on tobacco is pretty lax, and that people who deal in tobacco only may be not really following the rules as far as the regulations that are set forward with tobacco shops. So it's something I think is important to go before the planning and zoning board. And I'd like, I'd like to see this done the right way so that we could see some results, so thank you very much.
You know that with the regulation of tobacco, that'll go, that still will go through the state, right? We won't regulate tobacco here in the Village of Villa Park. That won't be up to us to go after fraudulent tax codes or anything like that, right?
Well, I know a state senator.
Again, though, but yeah, that's, that's, I mean, our code enforcement has a lot to do. I can't imagine we have to regulate cigarette sales tax and everything else. That would be, okay. Trustee Davis, any thoughts?
I'm just puzzled at the fact that they keep popping up, because I hear smoking's going down, but yet we keep getting more places.
Well, you figure we're on the other side of Cook County, so we don't have the Cook County taxes. That's probably the number one factor. There's a lot of open space in the village that's right on the, that's right up, I mean, literally, St. Charles Road is probably the first business corridor. I mean, you'll hit that little strip, not the little, but where the Coles is and everything. But once you get, once you get off the Eisenhower, you come out of Bellwood, the first business district you hit is right at 83, and then across the street is Villa Park. Figure you got two right there. Thornton's is, Thornton's gets tons of customers based on just their cigarettes and their cheap gas, because they come right off the Roosevelt Spur. It's the first place you hit outside of Cook County, so you lose all the county taxes, you lose all of that taxes. They grab it, they go right back in.
Do we know the difference in the price?
It's huge.
I do not.
I quit at $10 a pack.
I do not.
My wife is paying six something.
I know it's, I know it's pretty, I know it's pretty hefty. They're saying down to the city, prices down in the loop, it's $10 or $11 for just a pack.
That's what I've heard.
For just a pack. So you figure if you're doing a $4 difference per pack out here, for a carton that saves you $40. People will drive out to do that.
Not to mention the health impact, too.
So, all right, then we'll ask for all the information, and you, as soon as you can get that to us, we would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, discussion, annual update of village's safety incentive programs. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Safety Committee is recommending in 2013 a continuation of the safety incentive program and the Safe Driver Program. The programs, if approved, will be included in the fiscal year 14 budget. Full-time and regular part-time employees are eligible to participate. Union endorsement is requested because of the economic benefits of the program. Staff recommend the president, board trustees approve the continuation of this program. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mr. President?
And we have Janet here, who is our HR director, who will be more than happy to answer any questions about the program, the benefits. We've all gotten in our packets what the positives are. Janet, you want to just blow through the positives real quick for the public at home?
Yeah, I mean, I think, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm extremely impressed with our level of safety performance for, from our employees. For two years in a row now, we've not only met our overall village safety goal, but each department has met their own goal. And, you know, I think it was three years ago, we had 21 people who took an early retirement plan, so, I mean, we've had some tremendous turnover in our ranks and across the board in each department. And I just think it says an awful lot when you have a year where we've had just this declining lost time. A lot of our employees are very motivated to come back to work. They do come back to work, even if they come back to work on a light duty basis. But, you know, certainly, it's their safety program, and they're, they're the ones who really accomplish this goal. And I, you know, I'd just like to remind the board and the public that these are the guys who are out there on days like today fixing water main breaks, you know. I mean, they have great potential for injury in each department. So we, we switched this program around a couple of years ago, because we did have a high number of losses. But the board, the Safety Committee who I work with felt very strongly about reinstating the Safe Driver Program this year. We had a Safe Driver Program, we had cutbacks in our funding, but they felt that with the amount of time that many of our employees spend in the cars, that we really wanted something to give them as an incentive to drive safely. So we are requesting to put that back in. It's a $10 gift certificate for anybody who meets the goal, so Target usually.
What?
It's a merchant retail.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah. So, and you'd be amazed how many people are, they, you know, the minute we hit January 1, I was like, did we make our incentive program, you know? So it definitely gets the attention of the employees, and like I said, I'm just, I'm very proud of them for the last two years. They've just done a phenomenal job, so that's what I got.
Well, thank you. And how do you get the information out? I mean, is it just posted, or do we actually have meetings and sit down with everybody?
We have, we have a monthly meeting with our Safety Committee, and we do statistics. We set a goal for each department, and we set a goal for the whole village that we post. And then at each meeting, when we meet with our Safety Committee and with the department heads, they're given a monthly update on how we're doing against the goal. And the goal is decided by, we take five years of the previous five years of lost time days. We then average that out, and each department, each year, has to have a reduction of at least 25% to meet the, to meet the goal. So some departments have a much more stringent goal, because they've had some really good safety performance. Other departments...
It gets harder and harder for the good guys.
It's gonna get harder for them, but, you know, if they had a good year drop off, then this year, they're, they've got a little bit more days. But you got to remember with police and fire in particular. Now, we also sit down and talk about what is a chargeable and non-chargeable goal. For instance, police officers that are in a physical altercation that they did not start, we review each one of those, and we decide whether or not, you know, because they have a physical altercation, which they have obviously no control over, then that may not be a chargeable event. But the other thing we wanted to do this year is to roll in some more part timers, because with some changes in how we're viewing part timers as a part of some of this affordable healthcare, we felt that we needed to also kind of wrap that into the program. So each one of the unions has endorsed this. I did get something from each of them. So, you know, they're behind it, and I was just really looking forward to another good year.
Fantastic. Questions?
President Colleton?
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Tell us a little bit more about the Employee Wellness Program. What's that all about, and how's that been working out?
We have a program every year that you guys, we come back to you later on in the year, and we'll ask you, we actually call it our physical program, but it is a wellness program. And basically, we offer our employees, we have a group that are mandatory, that they do get, like, police and fire, I'm sorry, not police, the Fire Department, Public Works and Parks Department, all go through mandatory testing in order to meet certain OSHA regulations. And in the case of the Fire Department, they take it a step further. They have their NFPA regulations. So they actually have a pretty stringent physical that they go through every year. We work with Elmhurst Hospital. And then basically, we also open up to all of our employees a voluntary program where we subsidize by $25, and then they can also take, you know, advantage of all of these other shots, or blood pressure testing, or whatever. In the past few years, flu shots have been increasingly popular among, and obviously, for many of our staff, they are in the public, so, you know, they are at high risk. But that's basically what our wellness program is at this point.
You didn't mention that the police are involved with the wellness?
The police are involved, but they are not in a mandatory program, but they are eligible for the voluntary program, so we have...
Is there a reason for that, why they're a little different?
They're not, they don't wear respirators to the same extent that the other employees do, so we actually have to get, under OSHA regulations, a sign off from a medical professional that individuals who wear respirators on a regular basis are able to wear them. So they're, they go through an actual defined program. Our Public Works Department, believe it or not, because of their work in the waste, wet weather flow treatment facility, which is really a mouthful, they actually do have to wear some escape-type respirators. So they're also wrapped into that program, along with Parks Department, some other people who use the cartridges. So the Police Department, it's not mandatory, but they do participate in the voluntary program.
Do we have a good number of police officers that participate and take advantage of what the wellness plan has to offer?
It's gotten better every year. You know, I'd always like to see that improve, but yeah, I would definitely say that we have, you know, that they will come, and especially, again, like I said, they'll come in and do some of this testing that we offer through the hospital. When I first started this program, I don't even know how long ago it was, we had a lot of hesitation on the part of staff, but now that they've really kind of got, gotten to know the doctors, you know, frankly, it's predominantly, we predominantly are approaching a male population, because it's mostly who we have that work for us, and they tend to not, you know, maybe trust necessarily the physicians, but over time, they've built a relationship with them, and I think that that's really helped. So from year to year now, we see more and more people that they have a positive experience, so they're more willing to come in, and the $25 subsidy helps, but quite frankly, that's, that's, you know, we have a lot of people that also pay on their own, so...
Yeah, because of course, it's important to keep our police officers healthy, too.
Yeah.
You know, in good shape, if they're chasing people, or whatever it is that they're doing, you know, keep in tip-top shape as well, so...
Right, so, so that's kind of, that's the program that we have, and we come back to you later on in the year. And actually, I do a, I do a whole presentation to you on the actual physicals, but...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item nine, resolution approving the Safety Incentive Program and Safe Driver Program. Do we have a motion of the resolution? Mr. President? Trustee Taglia, can I have a second?
Mr. President?
Trustee Davis, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Colleton?
Yes, so the motion is approved. Item 10, public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Please come up and state your name. Please come up and state your name.
Mike Erloski.
There's a sheet up there for you to sign in on.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Make sure you spell it right. I don't know, it was sitting back there. I was wondering, seeing that the road referendum was cut from the plans again, if I can get an update, that's some people's favorite word, on what the plans are to get our roads repaired. I think the village needs to quit living in a glass house. If you're going to send people out to fine and cite people on them not maintaining their property, then the village needs to start doing the same thing. We're not going to have, either way you look at it, it's going to be a tax. It's going to be a fee, it's going to be something. But the more we delay it, the worse it gets. At the end of the year, can I submit the bill for the repairs that I have to do to my vehicle for driving on rough roads all year long? It needs to stop. We need a plan. So every, every meeting I come to, I'm going to ask, what's the update on getting our roads fixed? And also, is there a way that we can try to clean up the town? We have a piece of property that the village purchased on North Avenue, other known as Popeye's Chicken, and it looks like a dump. It's, it's on a main thoroughfare to our village. And the last message that I think we would want to send business owners or potential business owners is that, welcome to Villa Park, here's our dump. So do we have any new news on getting roads fixed?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've asked George K. Baum to provide us a timeline that would go along with the elections in, I believe, 2014. And we should have that shortly. They will work, they will work backwards from the election in 2014 and go back to a starting place where they feel comfortable that we can have a successful bond referendum campaign put on by their folks out of California. And we met with those folks probably about a year ago. And so that's the plan right now. And as soon as I have the timeline, the board will get the timeline, and we'll take a look at that. For the North Avenue, that is our property, we have some dirt up there that has to be tested before we can take it away, and it's being tested right now. And you can't cart it away anymore without being tested. I think we all know that, it's effective January, the new law wants to effect, it's got to be tested before it can be taken to a landfill.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Second.
Ayes?
Ayes.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Good job.
Nice work.
8:23, 8:24.